This conference will now be recorded.
It is eight eleven. Special meeting to order. Day, July thirty first. And this is following our executive session just at seven P M. Um, all council is present. Us media and everyone else authorities signed in, so. Um. Yeah. 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 Absolutely. All of us is the same. Yes. Okay. So. So your question. It is eight eleven. A special meeting to order. Day, July thirty first. And this is following our executive session just at seven P M. Um, all council is present. Us media and everyone else authorities signed in, so. Um. We change for the agenda.
You know, we need to add the. Discussion about the potential or. The agenda first. Be the first topic.
Yeah. Change number one amended to say stuff I'm getting ordered. So the way. Oh, yes. Alright. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
I make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Barry makes the motion. Katrina seconds, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Alright, passes. Alright, so let's talk. This is the time for public comment. Um, if it's something that's not on the agenda, so just reminder things on the agenda is interim city manager. And then the possible resolution. So if it's not on the agenda, now would be the time to do public comment. I'm gonna ask you to come forward and stand here so that we can get you on the recording so that my minutes person can get it. So if you have a public comment, please raise your hand. If you're online, please wave so we can acknowledge you. So interim city manager. We just had an interview for a gentleman who is willing to be. Not willing to take on a permanent position. Um. Council wants to delivery, talk about what we're thinking.
Um. Yeah, we needed to do this in regular session, so. There was discussion. In the executive session, if we're allowed, but we're not allowed to make decisions. Um, the gentleman interviewed well. He seems to have more than adequate experience. Um, he responded to our questions. Well, had good answers. Um, I think he deserves an opportunity. My opinion. He's not sure. How much onsite time he can spend, I believe, we talked. He lives Washington, state of Washington. Um, he said he would have to discuss that with his wife. So I would like to see council. Whether it be the mayor and the city attorney, whether it be consultants, the mayor, the city attorney. Or the administrative committee and those other people stated. Um, enter into negotiations with him, see if we could come to reasonable terms where he can actually spend. A fair amount of time onsite. Because that's really what we need. As far as his qualifications to be able to handle the job. If we don't want that, they could. He's lucky he has three months, maybe over getting to stay longer, if we're close to a potential full-time candidate. Those are all negotiations that need to happen. Um, so my opinion is those negotiations need to start sooner than later. Yeah, so council needs needs to decide here they want involved in those negotiations. During this open session, I assume we can try and move forward with this possibility.
So comments, council, ideas on which route you would like to take?
I would like to definitely forward this and um. I think that we would be good with the administrative committee. Did it?
With?
With.
Any outside?
With um, with Greg.
And.
And.
And. Legal counsel, legal counsel, yes. And I heard town with six members of council now entire administrative committee. Is that a good one?
No, so.
Four is still four.
Still four.
No.
I think the public needs to be aware of this would be a contract authority, not a city. A contract.
Um, that's due to his retirement.
Yes.
I would have the same issue because I'm sure with his years of public service, he's probably had it first. And so he only allowed to make so much money before before it affects his retirement if he works. For a person employee employer as an employee. If he's a contractor, then it doesn't affect his retirement, and so that's the way he prefers it. But then we don't pay insurance and and benefits and those types either. Now, no price was discussed with him, consultant gave us uh estimating possible cost, but that's all up the negotiation. Which is yet to be determined.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that the administrative committee enters negotiations with William.
Brandon.
Brandon. Along with legal counsel. For interim city manager position.
And do you want to include Greg consulting?
Oh, and Greg, yes, consulting.
Right, so. So your motion was for the admin committee, legal counsel, consulting firm, and Greg to start negotiations for an interest. Again. Ready to go ahead. So Chris made the motion, Katrina made the second. Any other discussion? Well, yeah, happened. Um, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Fave motion pass. So admin committee, I was another, you can't get emails still. Okay, okay, I'll send out an email and copy all of them on their. Are you around? This week?
Around, but I got family.
No.
The availability, because I thought you said you were gonna. Put somebody else in place on that. But where?
I have not. You're still on.
Do you, do you give me a time and I'll let you know?
Okay.
That's the best I can tell you, and if I'm not available, you are with me.
Okay. So if anybody has any comments, try to keep them under three. If you would stand up and try to sort of talk towards us, but closer to the computer so that nine minutes and you can stand up right here.
Set your name and city, please. Katie John Day, um, I guess my question is. To me, this sounds like. Up to a point, this is the exact same situation we found ourselves in with Greg out. With somebody who may or may not be here very often, and my my opinion is. Now. It's imperative. That whoever this person is has. The duties, full duties and responsibilities of a city manager, interim city manager. Are members of city council do not. So I guess I'd like to know if you can without divulging the things that you shouldn't. What makes this different?
So I mean, yeah, absolutely. That was actually a question we asked and um. He, if we decide to go down to negotiations and we decide to offer him a deal, he would be dedicating. Thirty, forty, something in building every single week, we would know that before negotiations or during negotiations, but that was brought up by many counselors. Um, and we discussed that with him, and that's something that he needs to go back and think about because. We're quite aware of the need to be in building and be in city. And so he's been to discuss that and think on it, and then we also need to negotiate what that looks like, thirty hours, forty. I mean, I don't know what that looks like, to be honest, but we feel the same way. There needs to be a city manager in this building, a certain amount of hours every single week so the staff and the community and council knows. Other comments, questions? Hearing any?
Oh, and.
About what?
So then you're answering that part of your survey question. If we hire a certain city manager, that city manager will give a given full authority over employees and everything. And there will not be a need for city council to play on that responsibility for us. That should finish answering part of your question.
Alright, yeah, step on up here, please.
Alright, okay. So, um, question, just, or maybe just something to think about is, um, has there been discussion or thought towards? Having somebody whose short-term interim, you know, how they are going to, you know. Um, prioritize and spend their time project-wise or initiative-wise. Um, you know, I feel like there might have been an issue previously where um. A interim city manager making decisions um that have like long-term issues for the city. Um, but also not being the person who's going to be there to implement it long-term. And um, how how would this city manager go about making sure that he is spending his time on the right initiatives, making sure we're checking our boxes on the right programs? Um, and uh. While while also, you know, dealing with everything else, we found that we ran into a time conflict challenge previously, so. Um, how would that look different this time?
Um, I think between the admin committee and council's direction, we would put together a priority list and he needs to stick to it. I mean, I think that was a prior live and learn um. With more direction from admin committee and council on where our goals are and what we have as the next. If he's only here for three months, uh, we'll know that before we start type of the thing. Uh, if we know we got three months, what are some of the things that council really feels like are high priority? Does that sound good? Chris?
Really? Uh, he has vast experience putting in treatment plans, started nothing but a twenty million dollar treatment. We asked him if he involved that. I think that's one of our high priorities, audience for me, though.
Yeah.
So I feel comfortable that he would. He personally. I'm gonna move that off quicker.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think that that was, that was just something I noticed is that, you know, there's, there's a lot to do in this job and, you know, finding. You have an individual who might have a lot of experience and might focus in on a particular area and that if that aligns with what the city council is wanting to focus. Maybe that's great, but if it doesn't, then you could, you know, spend a lot of time on focal areas that are are end up neglecting and really important for the areas.
Yeah.
One more component to that would be like things, I, one of the things I recommend would be that some sort of a system where. The city manager is not making any sort of decisions to not follow through on certain or not continue certain um processes or. Um, making sure that they're keeping up on deadlines appropriately, um, or if they're gonna. Deprioritize something, if they come to council or have a system to really communicate that so that also can be aware of what is being focused on or deprioritized.
Right.
Well.
Thank you. Make this a suggestion.
Yeah.
And we create as part of the advice, I I think it would be. A process of him. Explain showing how many hours he spent on X project, Y on X thing, so that so that again, council is very appraised in this situation and knows what. Speaks.
Yeah, I like it. Yeah. Good question, thank you. Any other comment? Yes, step on up, Mr. Lellican.
Rich Lellican, John Day. If Mrs. Interim Manager doesn't want this to happen, you guys have a plan to back it?
Stay tuned. There are no other applicants at this time that are wanting to interview. So out of applicants, no. Any other comments, questions? Is that an arm up or is that just an arm up? Okay. Alright, so moving on. Um. Resolution. Twenty-three, nine, oh, four, oh, four, a resolution of the city of John Day authorizing the mayor and his or her designees to perform certain city manager duties and responsibilities. Um, I provided this to you guys through email, and then I also sent it to you with on the website. This can be changed, this is not a lock-in draft, Jeremy and I. And a little bit of Dave from our meeting last Thursday and then last night, put it together, um, if there's things. Do this, like we need discussion, so. I will open the floor for discussion with council.
I think it's a necessity.
I have problems. You get it? Okay, is there anything that you feel needs to be changed, needs to be edited? Uh. Who you think should be doing it? We need to have those discussions right now, please. Right, and then I'll open some for public comment, just a second.
Last Tuesday, this council met. And uh. The meeting was recorded by audio and visual. Or in video. Uh. One of our counselors comments. Was muted for forty-six seconds.
It was not muted.
If it wasn't, then uh, what I listened to today. It sure changed.
Uh, we were able to just, you know, we're able to pull from the Facebook feed.
I'm not talking about the Facebook feed. I'm talking about when online.
Correct.
It was muted.
It was not muted, it was a technical difficulty and we could not, I did not touch the mute, nobody touched the mute.
Okay, so if I'm ready. If the video shows somebody touching the computer at that time, then uh.
So there was a person that had background music, do you, or do you guys remember that?
This person here. Need uh, your computer. Did you mute? The conversation.
I did not mute the city manager first, I muted the person. That's who, that's who we're under on here, it says city manager. So ours would be city manager would have to be muted. I did not mute the city manager, there was a person and I can't remember who it was that had their, so when they're talking, it's not red. And it will be, see how ours is green right now, it'll show that they have background. They had the rick, 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 rick noise when Ron started talking, and I muted that person. I did not, and I never touched the screen again to unmute anything. So I did not mute the city manager at any time, and it never showed muted on the mic right here on the computer screen. You can see the mic is white, and when it's muted, there's a red. I've been asked multiple times.
Also, uh, during that meeting, a uh. Counselor was asked why he voted against a particular candidate for city council.
And he.
Uh. That person. Indicated he voted because of ethnic concerns. Mister Phillips. You admitted to stealing private property off a public property.
It's, it's a.
Yeah.
Um, we're discussing a resolution right now, we're not discussing what happened last week. Thank you. I love the resolutions of and his or her designees. Then exhibit A provides those responsibilities only to one. Mayor.
So. Like I said, this was a rough draft that Jeremy put together for you guys to go in front of. If council wants it to be someone else, I want to hear a discussion on that. If council wants it to be multiple, like two people, that is fine. Um. Dave and myself and the attorney met last Thursday and we brought this to the attention. We don't have the possibility of when that might for sure happen, hopefully soon. Um, and. Dave has requested to not be this portion of it, not the other resolution that we currently have to be. Still in effect, but not to be this portion of it, so that is probably where Jeremy is coming up with the mayor. So this is a new resolution because Dave doesn't want to be. First, the first one didn't have any authority to do personnel. And we can change for it, like the. It still has all the same things that our original resolution has as well as, and we can change. Like if you want the hiring and firing piece to still come in front of, I mean, there's no, this isn't locked in stone. This is have a discussion, figure out what we need to do, what we see as a priority for this resolution and have that happen.
Conversation with Jeremy. Um, because. Besides how you and I can. Try to work together, well, that was the largest part of our discussion. Um, the only other discussion was none of the other things in this other than the H R part. Other than dealing with employees. You know, in that meeting, I said I didn't, wasn't that I couldn't do it, it's just that I didn't know if I wanted. You be involved with. Managing, dealing with uh, hiring, firing, disciplining employees. Um, so. That's just a little bit of correction on.
Okay.
Counselor's statement. The exhibit A was not part of the original resolution. Um.
No, it's.
The original resolution is basically. The same as the one we're looking at here on the cover. Um. It was limited manage, uh, city manager authority. Uh, no oversight on the employees, we didn't have the authority for that. We also did not give that authority to. The interim city manager. Um. Take possibly, not a mistake, possibly, I have mixed feelings, although. The new one is more specific with the exhibit A. Um. I'm not comfortable with. Some of those things. Nobody on the council. Has the experience or qualifications to manage. Uh, numerous of those items. I'm uncomfortable with city council having the authority to manage those things with. Lack of experience, knowledge. Ability. Um, my. Issue with the mayor being listed. My biggest issue, I guess, is her. Fact that she has a full-time job that starts up in three weeks or so. Um, she's not gonna have time to fulfill those duties, that's damn near a full-time job. Uh, for being asked as counselors fulfill that full-time job for free. That's difficult to do. I'm one of. Three people on the council at present that are retired, but don't have a full-time job. Pretty currently on council due, it's hardship on council. You don't know what the solution is, I don't believe this is the solution. Um, I do not like. Uh, on under two on the resolution. Where it states that the mayor's limited authority granted this resolution on the day. Full force of fact until the earlier of. Either her vacancy, removal from office, or term expiration. That's potentially granting authority for a little over three years, potentially. Uh, I think that's excessive. Council's decision to revoke the authority. By council resolution is not another one of the ways out. Well, if you have a split council and you can't even. Decide. Who's gonna fill a vacant position if you can't agree on something? Are you gonna have enough authority on city council? To revoke authority if it's not being used properly or whatever, so that's a concern of mine. Uh, we're at a three-three council right now. Uh, we do not have the. Seventh person. So if. These three people vote one way, these three people vote the other way, it's a tie, nothing happens. Nothing positive happens, nothing negative happens, nothing happens, period. So that's the situation we're in, because we. Are back to. That uh. Six-member council rather than a seven-member council. So that creates a concern for me. If part of the council feels that it needs to be revoked and the other part doesn't. Neither side will win, it'll just be a tie and nothing will take place. That's a concern of mine, um, there's numerous concerns, but those are just a few, I'm not gonna take up the whole floor, so. I'll open it up to whoever else wants to throw something out there.
The other woman, yeah, the one I asked, which is.
We do have to do something, Sherry, and I spoke with the city attorney this morning on this issue. Um, and. He asked me the same question, and I told him I don't have the answer. I don't have the answer, my opinion, the way this is written. And how it's written is not the answer. There's. There's issues with it. That will cause problems somewhere down the road, that's how I feel about it. That's only how I feel about it, everyone else has their own voice and their own vote. Um, the. The solution is to get somebody hired. Whether it be an interim city manager, a third-party contractor. I don't care, we need somebody. That's a third party at this point to step in here and start dealing with issues. Because we have. Split public opinion. We have split council opinion. On what to do, how to do it, and who should be doing it. So that's gonna get us absolutely nowhere. Our only option is some type of a third-party situation, whether it be a city manager, an interim city manager. Some sort of professional contractor. I don't know. But I think. Where we are at, where the community's at. Where the council's at. Where the employees are at, and I worry more about the employees than I do the council. Because if we lose valuable employees over a stupid mistake we made. Community are gonna be the ones that suffer. If the public works department walks away because they don't like who we put in charge. As a, not necessarily an interim, but a council member who should never be in charge of employees. I mean. Then the community suffers, we all suffer. If office staff walks away because we do something like that and they disagree with it, and the only way to object to it or protest to it is they walk away. And they disagree with it, and their only way to object to it or protest to it is they walk away. Then the public suffers. The public suffers the worst. So we need to come. Some kind of decision or some kind of conclusion. That we get council and mayor out of managing the city. And we get back to doing what we're supposed to do. And we get somebody in there to run the operation on our behalf with our guidance. That's my solution. That's my recommendation. How that happens, I can't say because. I don't have control over it. I am one voice. On the city council.
So if negotiations happen. And he says no, or we say no to the amount or whatever, then what should we do?
I don't have that answer, Heather. I do not have that answer. I just don't feel that council. Managing employees and managing the city. Okay, I realize that's how Prairie City does it. They don't have a city manager, their council and mayor, they manage their city. But that's how they've always done it. Our council and mayor are not used to happening to be that. That is not the way we've always done it. You know, uh, we've been doing it this way since Bill Dees was city manager. I believe he was the first one. Some years ago. So for forty-some years, we've had a city manager, council hasn't been involved, so council isn't trained. We don't have experienced counselors. Like Prairie City, Dayville, Mount Vernon, Santa Cruz, Tanya City. They all work on the same system. We're different. We're bigger. We do it different. But they all have council people that when new ones come in, they have people there that are used to how it operates. So they can train them, they can show them, they can teach them. We don't have that ability. We don't know how to do it. Nor do we have the time to do it because most of us, most of the council works well then. And there's a lot of time involved in that stuff, so. They don't have the absolute answer.
City manager, that's where that feels. Especially as they're listed in exhibit A. To, to one person. No matter who that person is on the council, I don't feel like that they completely eliminate stress balances. And I don't think that's acceptable.
Well, and I mean, let's be real honest, it's also a volunteer position lately. A full-time job as a volunteer is. Not what we all signed up for, but we're doing. I admire doing what they have to with this quick moment of the last eight months, but we would really prefer to have somebody comparable to me who's qualified. Yes.
I'd like to ask the council. What role does the city council play? Don't we set policy and we hire and fire the city manager? That's it. That's all we do. And now you want, I believe it's illegal for the mayor to hold the city manager's decision, say. If she wants to resign and be the city manager. Yes, that's up to her.
This wouldn't be holding the city manager.
Yes, it is. It's right there. You would be the city manager.
This obviously is not a legal risk because our attorney is the one who drafted this.
Well, I disagree.
Certain city manager.
Hiring and firing employees by the mayor and from the city council, we do not need that, so.
The city council can. Give recommendation to the city manager to fire.
Right, who said that? Who said that?
I'm, I'm asking that. Okay.
That's not our responsibility. That's our department employees and.
So if we don't have a city manager, who does?
What happens with the city manager? Prior to this, what happens?
Generally. Not in all cases. In some cases, if they feel there's a conflict, like department head. Uh, they would be left in charge to take care of certain issues. If there was an employee issue, you were not allowed to deal with it. Um, you were not allowed to discipline, you were not allowed to confront, you were not allowed to do any of that kind of stuff. I was put in that position several times. During my career with the city. I was left in charge by Peggy Gray, the city manager at the time. I had limited responsibilities. I had limited things to take care of for. Um, anything super major. I would call her, otherwise I would wait till she got back and I would fill her in on what was going on and she would deal with. In this resolution. The first resolution, of course, did not allow for dealing with city employees. In this resolution, it does in the exhibit part of it. Uh, my complaint to the city attorney was. Didn't feel that was a good thing. He offered that. That could be done. Through not just the single person having that authority, but. That person, whoever is delegated in this. Bring it back in executive session to city council. The city council makes the final decision since we don't have a city manager. I agree with the city attorney that something needs to be done. Employees need to be controlled. Not that they're out of control and not making any incituation. There needs to be control, there needs to be guidance, and there needs to be direction. So somehow we have to give our employees, the city of John Day employees, that stability. That's what, that's what's lacking right now for our city employees is stability. So somehow we have to give them. Um, my preference is the city manager because that's what their job is. Short of that. We have the council left is all we have. And collectively as a group. In a discussion. Potentially could still be reasonable. I think individually, especially without much experience, especially with public employees, we're opening the city up for lawsuit.
Heather, in response, I believe you said, what, what do we do? We could change the city charter. And gives the city council like they do in all the other cities. Will help. Operate the city.
And eliminate the city manager, but. I don't think that's a wise city.
Fired. That was hard. That's great. I remember Dave, the mayor, and Peggy was here and I remember him being cared by. He worked very well.
Question on public comments on this other thing? Yeah, go ahead, stand up. So if you'll stand up and come closer this way.
I just have a question, um, just. Do you have a department head that could serve as an acting city manager, writing up, be out of employees that can step up and. Fulfill specific roles? Or is there someone in the community like or have someone who does books or someone? Who's a trusted professional who could temper and build on that board? Other than you, so I'm just asking questions.
We haven't looked into that.
Seems like that would be.
I don't understand her. We have not looked. Department heads. We have two department heads left. This is called the board director, one is the fire chief. Public Works Director is relatively new at his job. He's worked for the city for fifteen or so years. In public works, um. He has got an overwhelming. Much going on right now. Uh, to try and put something that in his lap would be extremely unfair. At this point, uh, or do I believe he'd be willing to, I'm not speaking for him, this is just my opinion. Um, as far as fire chief goes, we have not approached him on it. He also works for public works. That's the only two department heads we have left.
Can you state your name and city?
Shannon, the mayor, John Day. So I would agree with, um, with Dave. I think it's really important that somebody be involved in HR. That has managed people and that also has a background in HR. So it seems like there would be a way to separate out the functions that are listed to where you find. Where maybe there is somebody that can handle, that just handles HR. And could do that for the city. And then there's contractors that can handle project management, that can handle projects that are happening, they handle planning. Um, it continues to do that, so that would be a possibility. Um, I do not feel like there, there are people on this board that potentially handle HR, but um. There needs to be pretty tight. I mean, the le- the legalities of that are. So someone in there that doesn't, doesn't have that background, does not have that experience, not only can you help us, but you might.
Any other comments?
Okay, go ahead, Judy, stand up, please, state your city name. Uh, Judy, Shudy, John Day, um. It's a little difficult without having that in front of me, um, but listening to what you're. Well, it's online, it's all. There might be a possibility, I don't know this. I don't know that we're a unique situation in this. But I don't know if the League of Oregon Cities can help you figure out a better solution. To the dilemma. But I'm gonna speak for myself. And I'd sure like to hear from some of the other people that are here as well, because I think we're here with a common interest tonight. Of what we don't want. We do not want to see a continuation of what's gone on. It doesn't work. It's been harmful. It's not good for the city. Don't want to see it continue. I don't want the people who have been in that position to continue doing it, nor should they be. I agree one hundred percent. It's not your function. It's not your wheelhouse. Find another way to do it and do it quickly. Please. It does not work. It has not been working. Thank you.
I got another question.
Can you state your? Greg Caverly, John Day. Is it possible to get you any closer?
Guys, run off all your help, what are you gonna do?
So Greg's question for. Okay, so for the minute, Greg's question was if council runs up all their help, what are they gonna do? Greg Caverly, John Day. Hey, any other comments? Sorry, yes, step up, state your city and name, please.
Uh, Ron Lubbaum, John Day. Uh, my concern is we all left office. Uh, we had a whole bunch of projects queued up there to go. A lot of grant money on the line. Wondered if because of what's happened last eight years.
As of yesterday, Nick DeCotty just submitted our last one and we are up to speed in that product and all of our grant reporting and everything like that. You have a question, stand up and state your name, please.
My name is Beth Spel, John Day. And I want to address particularly the laws that talks about hiring and firing. I don't think that. I, I already know that the city employees, a, a lot of them are under a lot of stress because. Things have been handled pretty abruptly and sometimes rudely. And we have good people working for us and we want to continue to have good people working for us. And I think you need to be very careful. How you set up, how you're going to manage. Your employees and give this community, they're all. We have wonderful employees and we want them to know that they are appreciated, valued. And not subject to personality conflicts, which there seems to be a lot of that going on because of the divided council. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot.
Uh, this guy, John Day, um, so I think, I think there's. There's one of the things that Rick Allen had talked to us about when you're, you know, looking at filling the seat that Chris is in is. You know, he was talking about how critical it is for us to have our full seven-person board, um. And how much, you know, how harmful the split decision of, of the council is to our. Ability to hire a city manager, staff retention, just the function of the city in general. And so, you know, I've laid a lot of priority and he also laid a lot of priority on really filling that seat and, and. And there was, there was a big effort made, you know, when Chris was, you know, when there was. When Chris was appointed, there was a big effort made to, you know, really try to come together for the sake of unity. To, you know, try to bridge some sort of a gap. Um, and, and really encourage the council to do that again and really get the seat filled and have. Have some unification, uh, because we're just, that, this, you know, a lot of this, this resolution comes from a logjam of. Um, of unity and we don't have that unity. We haven't been able to retain staff. You know, we're gonna have trouble with hiring certainly a, a full-time position, let alone, um, an interim, until we have. Some unification council on their priorities and, and just getting somebody in the door. Um, and I also would just like to point out that whatever you guys decide, I, I would really recommend that you include staff in the discussion. I think that the best buy-in from staff and is gonna be with their inclusion in the process and, and in the crafting of the si- the, the, the situation. Whether there's an entity that's handling, you know, staff management, um, you know, having staff be a part of that conversation. Um, and, and support of others, so that when you guys come, you know, put forward a resolution, you have staff behind you saying, yes. We, we want this, this is the resolution that works for us and instead of, you know, a, a potential resolution that is. You know, hasn't, they haven't had a voice in it. Um, and may or may not support.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Hey, okay, step on up, please, state your city and name.
Tim Bay, John Bay. I'm sort of in the same camp. Oh, yeah, good, um. I have had three businesses, all successful because. I pulled the staff in. My opinion shifted because of that. So I was like, oh. I didn't see that. Changed everything. All my businesses have been successful because of that. Cause I wasn't the only one. And lock yourselves in. This is like, well. We'll see what happens, where you bet and call, if you don't like it, we're gonna go work at McDonald's, but. You know. And you won't hear it, so I'm gonna say. Elliot.
Thank you.
Share it.
All right, anything further? State your city and name, please.
It's a little courtesy, a member of staff. As a member of staff, um, I have no faith that you guys can vote in unison to have our best interests. And I do not think we should give any one of you authority to. Control us. Um, do we need direction and stability? Yes. We would love that. However. Direction and stability does not come in the form of somebody else telling us, oh, go left, and then two weeks later, somebody tells us to go right. And somebody who doesn't know which way tells us, oh, stop. We don't need that. It's not helpful. We need you guys. To vote together and find somebody to give us direction and somebody who. Can give us direction without discrimination and persecution. And we would all love for that to happen sooner than later. We have the best group of staff right now that we've had in my time here. And you guys are hanging by a thread for every single. are hanging by a thread for every single one. You're gonna have no staff. And I know that half of you would love to change a lot of that, which is fine, you're all entitled to that, that's part of being on the council is that you're gonna vote. But I'll back what Mrs. Spel said. I think you should be careful on the people who actually keep the door open here.
Thank you. Other comments?
Casey Meyer, Public Works Director, John Day. Everything Savannah said, people might wanna heed to that, because everything Savannah says, they're being a fool. The split is not working, and we all know, not just myself, not just my staff, everybody in this city sees the split is not working for what's going on in this city. I've worked here for a long time, I love this job, to the point now where I don't love this job as much. Think about your actions before you do it.
Thank you. All right, any other...
Judy, John Day, so from what you've heard, what's your next step with this resolution? It sounds to me like you need to just ditch it and start all over again.
I would say mine, from what I've heard from councils, we want to move forward with negotiations starting from some end there. Is that correct?
So I think you should do everything possible or face the consequences to make sure that some of the things in that resolution are gone, never to appear again. And I think you know which ones they are.
Thank you. All right, anything further? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:03.
I know.
Oh, right, okay.
Make this official. So, focus, concerning that. Now, this is Annabass from solution. All the paperwork that she had in her possession at her workplace. This is her letter of resignation.
Thanks.
Our financial person. Dear Mayor and Council, I have been involved with the city of John Day for approximately 20 years, and thank you for the experience and knowledge that I have received in the financial operations of the municipality in the state of Oregon. With this letter, I'm resigning my position as contract city recorder effective immediately. This decision has been a difficult one for me. I feel the future of the city is going in a direction that I, as a contractor, will not be able to provide the support that the city is wanting or needing. My electronic files have been copied to the city server, and any paper documentation that was in my possession has been returned. The senior accountant, Stephanie Allen, has access to the Bank of Eastern Oregon and local government investment pool, as well as the full security of the Bala General Ledger Program. Sincerely, Annabass. So unfortunately, she stopped by my house an hour ago for counsel tonight and delivered that to me. And I asked her if she would be willing to reconsider, and she told me she was just done. So... It's, to me, that's a sad day, but I think it, if things don't change, it's only the beginning, and that's my fear. If the city is in bad shape now, if you think it's at the bottom, we're away from the bottom. We got a ways to go to hit bottom. But if things don't change, that's the direction it's headed. My opinion.
Right. Any, it's this...
After our last council meeting, I was asked to do some investigation concerning a missing piece of property of what we're doing. I contacted the county judge, and he indicated he gave permission to no one to remove anything off of public land. After Councilor Phillips talked to him, I have a witness that was in on the conversation, Councilor Rell, who's also there when we talked to him. When somebody, a constituent of this community, asked Mr. Phillips why he voted against a person who applied for counsel, he said it's because of ethics. Well, that's his opinion, and I may agree or disagree, but he admitted to stealing something. I believe that's an ethics violation, and I'm asking tonight for Ron Phillips to resign, and I will pursue an ethics violation report to the state. Also, I had contacted the sheriff, he indicated he would not pursue an investigation because of the way the city and the county are operating at this time. He recommended going to the state police, and I said, he's already admitted to doing this. Hope this will be...
Would you like to make a comment or note?
I don't feel I spoke the sun.
Was it yours?
It's in Phillips. You know, I thought I was doing the right, because it is false advertising. I didn't do it maliciously. I had no idea that this was what was gonna happen. I agreed to go put it back up, and... Six standard. So... I don't know what else I'd do.
You're fine. Should page... Please no public comments, sir. If you would like to make a comment, please stand.
Yes, you state your name. Judy Shutey, John Day. Mr. Phillips, I'm going to ask you a question I asked you before, and I expect you to be the only one that answers this question. And I expect the truth. Did you, at any time before you took the sign, speak with Heather Brookstool about taking the sign? And did she indicate in any way that that should, could, or would be done before you took the sign?
I'm gonna just say, no.
No.
Answer.
Okay, listen, answer the question, please. If you're not going to answer it, I will be the first one to sign every petition. Petition, I hate recalls, you need to resign if you refuse to answer that question. You didn't get an opportunity to answer it at the last council meeting. I'm giving you an opportunity to answer it now. I think it's in your best interest to do it. Did you have interaction with Mayor Brookstool about taking the sign down? You're not stealing yet. Your, your public comment is done, thank you.
So three minutes?
I mean...
Three, five, broken.
Are you still refusing to answer the question? Or do you want to do the right thing and answer it?
No, it's not, through the ethics commission, they will ask you under oath that question, so you're aware. And if we go with the ethics commission.
It's in your best interest to answer it now, Mr. Phillips, not later.
I'm seeing on a...
Yeah, Jen Spel, John Day, I'll take another angle at that, and that's the mayor. Prior to that sign being removed, did you have a conversation with Commissioner Phillips?
So about a month prior, Ron came to me asking about the sign, if I knew anything about the sign. I said, we put it up there for the Hill Family Park grand opening. I think the land sale has happened, or trade has happened, I'm not really sure, it was back in June, July, when we talked about that. I have not heard anything further, and he said, well, I'm gonna go talk to the county, and I said, okay. So that was our conversation, a month, month and a half-ish, I can't be exact on the date when he came to.
So you're saying you had no information about him moving the sign?
Not until after he had done.
Casey Meyer, Public Works Director, John Day. Why wasn't this issue brought to the Public Works Director so he could investigate it before the signing was proposed? With no authorization from council? You guys don't work for county court, you work for the citizens of this community. It should've came to me before it went anywhere. I would've investigated with the Library Foundation, I would've found out if they wanted the sign to remain, or they wanted the sign removed. Public Works would've removed the sign if Library Foundation wanted it removed. I am extremely disappointed in you, sir. And you, madam, for not fessing up to either, either one of you. The last council meeting, you cut him off so fast he couldn't even answer. You did.
Okay, thank you.
There is, there's, John Day, anybody that knows my life knows that I don't have to defend him, he is a colleague smarter than me. I will say the hypocrisy, though, you're telling me that you thought you did nothing wrong by doing that. Exactly what she's been arguing as full of the last year. Everything with an email from Jeremy Green, City Attorney, coupled to Heather, supporting her, in her, his opinion, that everything that she thought necessary to refuse herself from possible events. But you're telling me in the same words that you felt you were doing nothing wrong, so that extends you from being in the sentence. Good thoughts, thought.
Okay, I would entertain a motion if there's nothing to write from council.
One, one quick thing. It's not false advertising, Ron. The current county court may not be willing to move the library, just like the current John Day City Council may not be willing to do some things. The county court that is there now with Scott Myers as judge, whether they like John Day, like the Library Foundation, whether they get along, whether they work together, is really a mute point for a long-range project, for a strategic long-range project. So to say that, county court to say that the library will never be there is a false statement. To say that they wouldn't vote for it in their current positions may be accurate, but the library could be anywhere, depending on who's at the county court at what time, who's on the Library Foundation at what time. So it's, it's not false advertising, and it's not an issue that should've been taken upon yourself to deal with. There was plenty of people to talk about it besides county court prior to taking the action that you've taken. We talked about those issues, similar type of issues where the council is, certain members of the council have gone behind the scenes to try and overturn council decisions. We talked about that in the work session, and within a week or two weeks of that work session, you not only went to county court and told them that the city would have money next year in their county budget, or to give the county for sheriffs, but you also took it upon yourself to take down a sign that had nothing to do with you as an individual. And really, the city of John Day, it was the Library Foundation's sign, and they were working with the city of John Day to benefit both of us. So, and I don't believe that that has been signed under that agreement. That needs to be taken care of, that is a vital piece of property for John Day and the oversized parking problems for downtown. And until that agreement's signed, we can't move forward with that project, we can't make down oversized parking for downtown. That needs to be addressed, the Library Foundation needs to be worked with in an agreement, or finish, finalize the agreement that Nick Green started with them, and the council approved, so that we have some oversized parking for downtown and the new camp watch on facility. Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your train of, your turn, I'll eat my mouth yet.
Meeting, I create a letter for all of you, and you, city of John Day, council constituents, this letter certifies immediate resignation and protest of the John Day City Council. The action of the mayor and some council members during violation of city charter against our municipal values and ethics. When I was elected to represent the constituents of the city, I was aware that there were significant divisions among council members. However, there was a general campaign promise of transparency and respect, so I believed that we could all come together and work together with those shared values and the inherent integrity that certain public requires. Over the course of the last six months, those values have been challenged. At our last council meeting, the mayor and one councillor refused to answer questions from the city constituents, showing a complete lack of transparency and respect for members of our city. Additionally, they spoke in condescending and rude tones to anyone who disagreed with their narrative. Another council member admitted to theft of city property while accepting no legal recourse for resigning. We then stated an ethics violation as rationale for not appointing inexperienced members to council. Then are we setting for members of our city, you all, if we do not hold leadership accountable for their illegal actions? After 4:00 PM yesterday, I received a text from the mayor that went to the entire council stating that we would hold a special meeting tonight, that we would authorize HR duties to the mayor. That Dave had not asked, had asked to be nominated, asked not to be nominated for this, and that we would have a resolution from the attorney, and that Heather was just made, made aware of this signal. So the text shows no room for discussion. Now, we did have discussion tonight, I won't say that, and it brings several concerns to me, however. We are expected to make this resolution, it, it looked, it, it showed all that we would be making this resolution tonight. We, what duties and responsibilities has the mayor taken on without the reservation between June 27, 2023, and Rick Allen's decision? And now, if we urgently need this decision tonight with no notice to the public. When the council initially agreed to assign duties and city manager position to Mayor Brookstool and councillor Paulson together, I did agree to it because I felt it provided checks and balances. If two members of the council had to agree on a commensurate matters and councillor Paulson's experience in public works met the needed qualifications that we have in our city charter. Exhibit A of Resolution 23-904-04 would give only Mayor Brookstool the duties and responsibilities of the city manager. This violates our city charter and at least four in our vice. One, Chapter 5, Section 22, 2 of our city charter states, majority of the council shall appoint and may remove the manager. The appointment shall be without regard to political considerations and solely on the basis of the commensurate qualifications. Our council has now been asked to appoint Mayor Brookstool to a position for which she and all of us have admittedly said we are not qualified. Two, Chapter 5, Section 22.7 also says that the city manager may not control the council. 22.8 says the city manager may not vote. Yet Section 16 clearly states the mayor resides over the council and is a voting member. These two roles are designed to be mutually exclusive, but as described in this resolution, they are comable, authorizing the mayor to bold vote and advance service to the city. This effectively converts our city manager government into a strong mayor government in violation of the charter. Chapter 5, Section 22.9 states the city manager pro temp position cannot be appointed for more than six months. Again, the term listed in this resolution does not clarify this timeline. Finally, Chapter 5, Section 22.10 states, except in council meeting, no council member may direct or indirectly by suggestion or otherwise attempt to influence the manager or a candidate for the office and ensure in the hiring, discipline, or removal of personnel or in decisions regarding city property or contracts. A violator of this prohibition may be removed from office under competent jurisdiction of council meeting. or contracts. A violator of this proposition may be removed from office under competent jurisdiction of council meeting. Members of the council may discuss with or suggest to the manager anything pertinent to city affairs. The resolution asks us to allow the mayor to run the city by many over say. Questions from the staff and public regarding the truthfulness of the mayor have gone unanswered in multiple meetings, and now we were asked to offer unbalanced power. Additionally, the urgent insistence that we need to approve this resolution calls to question if the powers the mayor has been exercising in the last months have been with public's ignition for proper warning. How much will we be paying for legal counsel to create a resolution at six thirty P M. on a Sunday? Further, the staff turnover in the last six months will have a direct impact on the city's budget. We have lost at least five employees and contractors since the election in November. Without trust in the process, I can no longer duly represent residents of the city of John Day in good conscience as a part of the council. I am not resigning because I don't want to represent you anymore. I am resigning because I believe that in continuing on the council, I am sending a message that I approve of the lack of respect, transparency, and integrity that is occurring. Pursuant to ordinance ninety-four dash seventy-six dash ninety-five, title one dash five dash four, council goal part F, I am providing this letter of resignation as my protest to resolution twenty-three dash nine oh four dash oh four, so that it can be entered into the process.
All right, anything further?
My name is Morgane, and President, John Day, I'd like to know the three locations of the, of the council that is being emphasized.
Okay, in here and also on the website. Inside this building? Inside this building?
Where did, where is this building?
Um, it was at the front desk.
I didn't see them either.
That's, um, this, this business was over yesterday.
How can you mean?
We're showing this.
I think that's why we're concerned. How any presidents and I give you authority. There are so many issues that there are challenges.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'd just like to know.
Please state your name, please.
My name is Beth Spell John Day. Been asked a lot of questions. And you've sat there and not answered any questions. Do you really think that people are going to have confidence in your mayorship or your term as councilman when you sit and don't answer pertinent questions for the work of this city? I think you guys are really obviously you've damaged this system terribly. A councillor like Katrina who is a moral, kind, and good woman can no longer be working in this terrible system. Anna Bass, how the hell are you going to manage without Anna Bass? You guys need to grow up and quit with your little clique and start working with everybody. And, and start answering questions when people ask you.
Thank you. Anything else? I entertain a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-four. David makes the motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Um, Sherri, seconds, all in favor, say aye. Motion is adjourned.
I'll sign the recall. I think stuff falls.